Okay, so it's five o'clock. We have a special council meeting today. And we're missing every councillor, but we are still recording. So today, this is a long-awaited presentation, rescheduled a couple of times from Aqua and R B Anderson. So welcome to get some.
Thank you, dear worship, thanks councillors. I'm sorry that we have rescheduled this one time for sure with weather. So we have two, actually, two sections for the presentations. We would like to thank everybody for your time and community to us. First, we'd like to present incentive check for the energy savings project that the town completed back in 2014. And I'd like to just share some of the key information from that project. The digital engineering study and the project itself was completed by R B A, Chris is here from R B A today. And incentive application and to get the funding or incentives, there has to be certain measures, where is it, for those things, and verifying the saving. That was all done by Aqua and then incentives were provided by the school, PUC and Mark and Marissa is here to honour us with their cheque. So some of the key numbers are the actual annual energy savings that was verified is about 320,000 hours. We will presenting a cheque of about 23,588, with H S D's about 26,500. We estimate that the annual hydro savings that the town will receive continuing going forward is about $44,800. This is at the rate of about 12 cents and as the hydro goes up, this number will change. Based on this number and the project cost that was spent by the town, we estimate that payback is about three years. So the town should receive the investment, recover the investment made on this project by the end of this year. That is our request Keith to present the actual cheque and Mark and Marissa to present the big cheque for the photo. And request the mayor and the councillors and everybody to join for the photo.
Where do we stand right in the middle?
Right here in the rail?
Yeah, yeah.
It's got it up this way, that way to get everybody here. You take your pictures first, I'll take mine after. No, no, I'll take mine after. You're getting a picture, you're talking.
Big cheque.
We doing a big cheque to you here? Everybody, everybody lays a big cheque.
Yep, it's amazing. No, I'm not done. I'm taking anything again. And then can you come over on the side, please? Thank you. Excellent. One, two, three. And again. Thank you.
Yeah, Mark, if you want to say something on behalf of PUC. Sorry, I'm just getting over a cold, so. Yes, I'm, we're just, Chris and I came from Susie, R E, on behalf of PUC. We definitely appreciative and supportive in all the community projects that go on here. We look forward to discussing, we're talking to you with any future projects. The incentive programs are still available. And we definitely are here to help in any way possible. So we, anybody who can be, either of us or any of us can be reached at the PUC. And we're more than willing to help talk about anything currently or future that could be, that could be going on. So, thank you.
Yeah, so I can, I can second what Mark said. These guys have been, you know, well and duly helping this happen because especially there was some time lapses between the project dawn and funding application. And I like, and Joel also, you know, helping going back and digging all the informations and then making this part closer. And so it's, it's a good. Okay, so the second part of the presentation, if you guys want to leave. But you, but you can stay and listen.
You're welcome to stay.
Is about the biosolids study recommendations. We're here with R B A to present on the study and its finding, how the study was done and, and what's the next steps. So before jumping into the technical details, I'd just like to, you know, give a little bit background on why the study was started on the first hand. Back in 14, 2013, 14 and 15, we are aware that the towns, you know, a town did some demonstration projects about potential process towards, you know, management of its biosolids and, and what it was being done on a regular basis. And you, we also know under the previous government between 2015 and 2018, you know, a bunch of policy changes. Typically, the climate change and climate change was a big factor. So the previous Liberal Government came up with Climate Change Acts and Plan in 2016, 2020, which put very much focus on greenhouse gas production projects. And, and they came up with the Waste Circular Economy and Waste Free Ontario Act, which laid a path to development of food and organic waste framework. And basically, the framework basically says that we're going to ban organics from the landfill in some future day. And it even went ahead and said for the municipalities, which has a population of 99,000 and above, the ban is going to be starting at 2022, 2023. And then on top of that, the Environmental Commissioner of Ontario, you know, produced a bunch of other reports saying that there's, there's a lot of potentials in municipal water, waste water systems, you know, energy conservation and then greenhouse gas production opportunities. So those were all, and then, as you know, under the previous government with cap and trade mechanism, they collected about $1.6 billion of revenue every year. And under the legislative mandate, they were supposed to spend the money on the same projects where it reduces greenhouse gas. So there was a lot of funding programs that was available at that time. And knowing that the town has done some demonstration project and they really needed to do something to manage your biosolids rather than sending it to subway all the time and then leaving at their mercy to receive those materials. So, you know, we, we came up to Joel and Cynthia and proposed that under these new funding program, there's a funding availability, which will give opportunity to the town to go back and look at the holistic picture of how you can better manage the biosolids, not just for the short term, but for the long term. And that's how we started this. Now, fast forward to 2019 or 18, elections happened last year, new government came. Unfortunately, the government was elected without any plan. So, which is very good because they didn't have any, you know, prescribed policies. But it was also sad that we don't know how the policies are set. So it took them about six, seven months to come up with this new plan, which they released in January, you know, May in Ontario Environment. But this is the only published document that the new government have in terms of how they're going to address the climate change and, and that's it. So, you know, we were very happy to see this document and some of the languages in this document, which I have kind of abstracted it. This, this document still supports biogas, you know, generation of biogas, converted into a clean fuel such as renewable natural gas. And the document still talks that new government supports organic waste diversing. However, with full disclosure, I would like to say that we don't have any details around how that's going to work. We don't even have an indication that if this government is going to continue the previous organic framework, which states some of the timeline, some of the population and size of the municipality. So at this point, there's nothing. However, just last week, they released that they're going to introduce a waste policy paper by the end of this month. So that will a little bit give more details on how they're going to, you know, meet these organic waste diversing objectives. They also have, you know, required natural gas, which is to implement a voluntary renewable natural gas option. That means, you know, out of total natural gas being consumed in the province, they will, they have told the natural gas provider that you need to have clean gas in that system. That will drive some of the waste from landfill process. And one of the, one of the biggest achievement at Aqua, we were able to convince the minister and the new ministry in, in recognizing the Stratford plant. So Stratford is basically doing, exploring the project where they're going to bring in the food waste, organics, fats, oil and grease from the residential and I C I commercial customers and co-mingling it with the existing wastewater stream and then producing biogas, then cleaning that biogas, operating it into a renewable natural gas and selling it to the gas industry. So that's a project we have been working with Stratford for the last one and a half years. And this document basically highlight that project as one of the potential good project. So that, that kind of reinforces that government is supportive of, you know, these kinds of projects, which is a good. Now, the government has its requirement from the Paris Agreement and Canadian, you know, recognition of the Paris Agreement. This new government has said that, that this is how they're going to meet the targets. You know, they, they have targets, otherwise the federal government is saying, if the province doesn't do anything, we're going to impose it, which we know that, right? So, so this is what, you know, some of the options that this, this new government says we're going to have. So low carbon vehicle optics. So basically, we will see in next coming months that there will be a program that's going to allow the vehicles to convert from the gasoline to natural gas or compressed natural gas kind of vehicle. So we have, we have already started seeing those happening in bigger cities, especially starting with the current trucks. There's a, there's a program that's, that's available from Enris where they change the fuel systems from gasolines to the, to the compressed natural gas, which is low emission. This government also has said that they're going to establish a fund called Carbon Trust Fund with $12 million. That's going to support the projects. They have, they have been very big innovation. They are saying anything that's innovative, we're going to support it and, you know, clean fuel. So we already heard about 10%, they have all the carbon, the gasoline and all those. So there's going to be a lot of these activities coming now. The reason I put this slide is that, you know, when we know that in order to meet for the funding requirement, which is going to come down the road with new government, our projects need to check these boxes. And, and that's what I wanted to present this to the town that so that in future, when we do anything, we need to make sure that these boxes are checked more, more often, more better. And our, 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 some of the options we have presented or we're going to present today kind of checks few of these boxes. So we are very confident that there will be a funding. Now, again, going to the funding side, at this point in the province, there's no funding available for these kinds of projects. And what we know that they have $1.2 billion sitting and they are working on coming up with a new funding program, which we will see. But however, the, the vacuum created by the provincial funding on availability has created federal funding program. So just this morning, I was telling Keith that we got a new notification for funding by the federal government for one of our projects for $2.7 million. And so there's a lot of funding programs and even the biosolids study was funded by the F C M, which is a federal program. So at this point, there's, there's various funding programs, which I'm covering in my last slide too. So as we said, you know, we came with the, we came up to the town and said, you know, why don't we step back and look at the whole, you know, biosolids as a whole and then do this study and come up with a roadmap that, that will be presented to the town, which is what we have here. So with, with the town's approval, back in December 2017, we applied for funding for the study through F C M, M C L P program. The funding was approved for 80% of the study cost in May 2018. And then the contract between the F C M and the town was executed in July 4. But we already were geared up to do this. So once we submitted the funding, we already went through the procurement process and we can, R B A and the consultant to do the study. And the study was completed in December 2018. We submitted the report or the documents to the F C M by December 2018. I think we are still pending with the last reimbursement. So I will, I will ask Chris from R B A to take the council through some of the technical details on how the study was done and how we came up with the recommendations and.
Thanks, Andrew. So I know that was probably a lot to absorb, but you've just had it with regulatory framework and everything else. But the thing to pick up on is that when we started this in 2017, you know, the landscape in terms of framework is very much different. But still, as you spoke, there's a lot of parallels with this new, this new government. So having said all that, you know, when we embarked on this in 2017, we were retained by Aqua in the town and developed a multi-faceted approach on how we're going to look at your plant and how we're going to look at the options that were available for the town and best suited for the town. So our first step was to review the existing plant process. Every plant's different and on Ontario, everyone has their unique challenges. So we wanted to make sure that there was no limiting factors within the plant process that would, that would preclude or eliminate some of the options they were going to consider moving forward. So we did that. We had a look at the, specifically the digestion process and where the stabilization would take place for the biosolids and had a couple tweaks in terms of the process, but essentially it was operating in a condition that could be used for moving forward on some of the options. We also did a review of sludge stabilization options, sorry, sludge digestion options in terms of aerobic and anaerobic. So what you have now is an aerobic system, it's open air digester. It's open atmosphere and basically adds air and it digests the process to make it stabilized and then you can deal with it afterwards. Anaerobic is a process that's employed throughout Ontario, different plants, but allows you to cover that process and pull off methane gas from it, right? And so from there, you can use that for energy recovery, heat recovery. You can take that, like as Andrew said, and feed that back into the grid as renewable gas. So we did that review. We determined that your plant actually was not conducive to doing something like that. The reason being is that the way your plant is set up is that you don't have primary clarifiers. So in layman terms, all the good energy that's going through the plant is all, I guess, expended through that plant process. So the only way to make that process work is if we introduce some type of, some type of food, like food waste, which lined up very good, what Andrew was saying, in the regulations, almost source separating all the organics, right? So if we can get the food waste, the fat, oils and greases and put that into an aerobic process, then that would work well and we could recover the energy from that. But that would require a conversion of your existing system into that. So now that we understood that, what we did is we went back to the technical working group, which consisted of R B Anderson, Aqua and the town and looked at what options we could employ to provide a sustainable solution for the town. And we came up with five options, which I'll talk about in the next slide. But from those options, we also developed an evaluation criteria of how we saw each one being evaluated and what would be the town's best needs to that evaluation criteria. And then we determined a preferred option from that. And then we also had a component of stakeholder engagement of local communities and local stakeholders, including private companies as well. And then we also had a review of the funding availability and how we would actually fund a project of this nature. So here's the five options that we came up with through the technical working group. But in terms of biosolids management, you really look at, you've got to look at three components. One, you've got to look at stabilizing your solids that comes up with plant, which is a biological hazard. You need to stabilize that process somehow. Then you look at volume reduction, so you can handle the process. And then you've got to look at disposal options. So while you've got it down, you've got it stabilized, you've got it reduced down to a, to a material you can work with, where you go. So on that note, we came up with five different options, or five different options, sorry. The first option that you see there is that, that's your base case. That's your, what you guys are doing right now. So you've got an aerobic digester, you gravity thicken that to get your solids up to 2% and then you haul it to subway where you pay haulage fees, of course, and then you pay tipping fees there as well. So that's the option we evaluated as a base case. The section option of that is where we took that option and we've kind of refined it a bit. So we've added in there mechanical thickening. Because you guys pay a certain amount of money for hauling it. A lot of that haulage is your hauling water. So you're hauling that at 2% solids, it's only 2% solids and the rest of it, 98% of it is water. So we looked at an option of let's try to thicken that water out of it, get it down to a smaller product and that of course will save you haulage charges. But the option was still to either bring it to the, to subway and if so desirable, land a plant. You'll see on a couple of options here, I've gotten land apply as an option. Understanding the history of land application in Northern Ontario here in the past and the ministry's issues with it as well. It's, we're not saying it's not a viable option, but we think it's a secondary option for some of these options. It's, it's not going to be the preferred option because of the potential for order complaints, public perception of what that material is and being on farmer's fields and crops fields, for instance. But certainly it is an option that you can't ignore and a lot of the regulations are steering toward that land application. So we've kept it here as a secondary option to understand that there is some flexibility with these options. It's not just, not just stuck with going to one application. So, so moving on to option three, that's maintaining your aerobic digestion process as well, but looking at geotube de-watering and now hauling it to land. So the geotube de-watering process is taking your, your liquid solids that you have out of your digester at 2% and pump it into a sock that consolidates all those solids, gets up to a place of 20% solids. And then from there, you can excavate it out and bring it to landfill. I should note that geotube de-watering wasn't the only de-watering technology. We've looked for this option, looked at this option. We've looked at mechanical de-watering as well, centrifuges and screw presses. The only reason why we carry geotube de-watering forward is because the mechanical systems we looked at were higher in cost, in capital cost, higher in maintenance. And there were some other issues with it, so we carried geotube de-watering forward for that option. Option four and five speak to the anaerobic process that I talked about before. So option four is mechanically thickening waste activated sludge that would come out of a process at the plant, put it into an aerobic digester that we co-digest with food waste. And then from there, be able to capture the gas off it and either use it for heat recovery, energy recovery, or put it back into the grid, we have to clean it and then put it back into the, the gas grid. And then from there, you still end up with a residual product. After you digest it, you still have solids left over. Unfortunately, the solids that's left over from that anaerobic co-digestion process is still liquid. So you've got to do something with it. So it's probably an area of 5%, but still looks like liquid. So option four is taking that liquid and bring it to subway as you get, as you do now with disposal of it, or again, potentially landfill. Option five takes that one step further from option four and says, you know what? If we have that liquid come out of there, why not de-water, get off, get off the city of subway, de-water that, that residual product and then bring that to landfill. So another step that's added to that process, but certainly a step that gives you flexibility in terms of being your own, your own municipality here, not having to rely on somebody else. So those were the five options we considered. So we did a multi-faceted approach to the evaluation as well. First of all, we looked at capital costs of each option. We looked at lifecycle costs over 20 years. 20 years is a typical planning period that we use for process type systems in our industry. In terms of lifecycle costs, we looked at the operation and maintenance of each option. We also look at disposal costs, which include haulage, tipping fees, permitting and any other costs associated with those, those other several costs. We also looked at greenhouse gas emissions. A lot of the funding opportunities that Andrew looked at in the past involves reducing greenhouse gas emissions. So it's certainly an evaluation that we looked at when we looked at each option. We looked at risk as well, what's the risk to the town? We looked at technical risk of each option, whether that was technically feasible and risks associated with constructing each option. We also looked at social risks as well, public perception in terms of, for instance, anaerobic processes, you'd be hauling food waste to, through residential neighborhoods to bring to the sewage plant for treatment. Well, there's a potential for orders with that and there's a potential for complaints. So we looked at that, associated risk with that and packaged, packaged that into our evaluation. Our regulatory alignment speaks to what Andrew was talking about a while ago. We looked at how each option would align with not only the regulations that are established for the new RAC, regulations that are established with, with source separating organics, but also administering environment guidelines and what do they, how they see managing biosolids. So once we had that, that was our kind of our core evaluation of each option. We also looked at funding opportunities. Because each, each option has different capital costs and operations and maintenance costs. Well, if the town can secure funding for the capital costs, but have a lower operations and maintenance costs, it looks more attractive for certain options. So we looked at four different type categories for that. We looked at getting no funding for the town, how would everything shake out? 25% funding, 50% and 75% funding. And we also considered some of the comments we received back from stakeholder engagement. So here is the summary of our evaluation. So just as you can see here, there's two real options that shook out of this, this evaluation and this study. Option three and option five. So just to recap, so option three was the existing process or aerobic process and geotube de-watering and hauling it to landfill. That was option three. Option five is the anaerobic digester. So when you're converting your existing process to the anaerobic digester, utilizing the gases for energy recovery, then you are also de-watering with geotubes once more and then you are bringing to landfill. So those are the, that's option five. So under 0% funding, option three scored the highest. That is the geo, just strictly geotube de-watering, bringing to landfill. With 0% funding, that would require capital investment of $1.4 million from the town. At 25% funding, option three still scored the highest through all that evaluation that we did. But obviously a lesser investment for the town at 1.05. At 50% funding, if that was to be able to secure, option five comes out ahead now. Because what you're doing is that funding is you're eating into that capital cost. Having said that, because the capital cost is so high with option five, you're still having to put in $5 million of the town's money to get that project to work. 75% funding, option five still becomes the highest, but of course now you're just less, you're paying less capital for that type of option. So just, just to kind of summarize the key, key points from both options. So option three, aerobic digestion, like I said before, and geotubes going to landfill. It's the preferred option if you have less than 50% funding. However, it's definitely the lowest capital cost of investment at $1.4 million, certainly with account of your size. You know, 1.4 definitely more attractive than $5 million, for sure. In terms of flexibility and sustainable option, it's definitely more flexible of all the options, which we consider to be more sustainable. You can either bring your, your biosolids after geotube de-watering to landfill, there's a potential to land apply it. If there was ever a reason that your process was shut down for whatever reason, there's still an option to bring it to subway. So it's three, three viable options for the town. And I can tell you, most municipalities these days, and Andrew would speak to this as well, is that more options for the municipality when it comes to biosolids. We never know exactly where the regs are going to go and we'd like to have an understanding, but we don't. And if there is ever a change and land application was being pushed by the municipality, certainly there's options allowed you to do that. If it ever told you, you have to get away from landfill. And if we look at in terms of doing something right now, if, if the town were to receive this option, it reduces the lifecycle cost of your current disposal method by 20%. That translates to a $1.7 million savings for the town over 20 years. In terms of option five, the anaerobic digestion method, it is the preferred option if you can secure 50% funding of the project. It's, it's just over a $10 million project to convert it to an anaerobic digester and introduce food waste. It does create savings by dividing food waste away from landfill and creating energy, of course. So a lot of the food waste that does go to landfill now would need to be sourced separately, which is another process on its own. But certainly you would realize that savings by dividing from landfill. And of course, creating the energy, you would realize that capital savings as well. Again, it's the highest capital cost at $10 million and requires a civic investment for the town of $5.9 million. So, yeah, there's a good chunk of money. So in terms of our study, most, most people were clicking, I was supposed to circle, but it all came up at once. But certainly, option three, in our opinions, was the overall preferred option moving forward for the town.
Yeah, so I, I, as Chris outlined, you know, based on R B A's and then, you know, input from town with some of the evaluation criteria and from operational input from Keith's group, from Aqua and my teams, which is Energy and Biosolids down in Toronto. And I, I think, you know, option three is a best option with, for various reasons, which Chris, you know, mentioned. Also, it will also put a town in a position down the road, 10 years down the road or 5 years down the road, if there's a need to upgrade the plan. So as he said, geotube will, will be a stepping stone on, on, on the project further down the road. And, and at this point, because of the new changes in the policy or clarity in the policy, option five is kind of expensive options. And we, 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 we'll be a little bit down the road for the town. So, yeah, and we kind of agree with R B A's recommendation is that, you know, option three, aerobic digestion, passive de-watering. So, yeah, and we, we kind of agree with our view of the condition that, you know, option three aerobic digestion, passive de-watering with adequate biosolids management. Whether it's a landfill or mine declaration. I added the mine declaration in here because after the report came out, you know, our biosolids expert had been talking with various mine owners up in here, which have shown a very good interest also, although not formally in the paper itself, but have shown interest on receiving that material at certain cost, which might be a lot of revenue on top of land application and land and a hauling to Sudbury, that's a full option, yeah, available. So as I said again, proceeding with option three definitely paves the way for option five down the road. You know, once the government starts, you know, formalizing, okay, legal municipalities, your ban starts in twenty twenty-two. And that's how we have looked at the comments that they're gonna see how municipalities work, react and how the market sees that opportunity and further strengthen that requirement for the smaller towns. And we don't, we don't foresee that it's gonna happen in the next ten years for the size of this town. So what I'm, why I'm here today is basically definitely to present the check, to present the findings and support, but there's two funding programs and with our experience with the funding program, the best suited for option three are the FCM capital funding program and the low carbon economy fund. Both are federal programs. One is run by the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, which, you know, all the municipalities are a part of. And low carbon economy fund is a funding program under a Ministry of Environment and Climate Change, which is a federal ministry. So both of the funding programs are very much suitable for these kinds of projects, which we have experienced and got funding for different other projects too. Unfortunately, the deadlines are just down the road, March one and March eight. But I'm, I'm fully committed that if the council, you know, gives me approval to explore or apply to the funding down the road in next two, three, two and a half weeks, I would be happy to do so. Again, these fundings are not like a binding fund, like they have to do the project, but I, I think my recommendation would be to explore this funding opportunity and see, I don't know, these results and then can decide whether to proceed. But again, it's a no brainer for me that, you know, the town has spent last couple of years exploring various options, which is, which is a very good thing that the town did. And I think it's also time to make some decisions on what's the next steps, right? And, you know, these, the second funding program is very brand new, this is the second year of that funding program. And because Ontario doesn't have any program, the, the federal government added about, I think, hundred eight million dollars on top of what is already available in that string just for Ontario projects. So basically what does that mean is that the number of projects approved under Ontario will be more than the previously anticipated. So, yeah, the FCM gives a funding up to eighty percent of the capital cost in combination of grant and loan. So they usually give fifteen percent as a grant and the remaining as a very low interest loan. But again, you can get up to eighty percent. Recently, we got two projects approved, one was sixty-five and one was seventy-five. So, you know, and just so you know, after recall, we have, because this study was funded by the FCM itself, so they already know the recommendations. So we have been having informal discussion about if we apply for this option versus that option, what are the chances? So, you know, they, they have confirmed that, we checked the number of boxes, so that might increase our chances to get funding. Low carbon economic fund is basically, as you saw, the name, it's usually for the greenhouse gas reaction projects. With the geo tube, if we're able to divert the waste from landfill or land application or same hauling, you know, transportation and all those, we would be able to make a very good case for the low carbon economic fund too. But if you ask me what's my strategy, my strategy is if the town gives me approval today or, you know, in, in next couple of days is to go with the FCM application because the study was funded by them. So it makes very common sense for them to fund implementation too and then back up as a low carbon. Any questions, Chris, and I will be happy to answer.
I have one, thank you for your presentation and telling me, there's lots of information that we got there. Can we apply for the funding of those spending opportunities?
We have, you can, and also if, let's say, best case scenario, we get approved for both. So both can be stacked up on each other.
Okay.
Yeah, but regardless of you get both or one, there's, most of these funding programs requires town to contribute some amount too. So there will never be a scenario where you, you can just get a hundred percent. But again, if, you know, to, 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 to compensate the balance of the amount that the funding doesn't cover. I mean, you know, we, Aqua is willing to discuss that with the town here, they're the need of those kind of, you know, contribution. Because we always, we're always eager to support our long-term clients too, our municipal clients. So, you know, we, we will simply convince our board to entertain some of those requirements. Because if, if the project is good on technical aspects on a long-term economical sense. I mean, and if there's only like a money barrier, a little bit of money, then I think they're open to have those discussions down. Yeah, so the FCM results will come in August, so the March deadline. And they are, they are, we have seen in last two years, they are very good with their timing. If they're announced in August, past two weeks, they have announced it. So a very, very nice program. And as I said, because we got funded eighty percent for the study by them, so that keeps us more focused.
Yes, Councilor Foster.
Just for a little bit of background, we, the town's been looking at this for a fair number of years there now. And the original estimate was four hundred and fifty thousand and it went up to six hundred thousand and it went up to a million dollars. We're now talking one point four million dollars to do the geo tubes. The previous council sort of put a little stop on that and we, we ran a trial, pilot trial for some new technologies from Europe. And I gather that pilot trial looked all right, but the capital cost was no better than, it was actually a little bit higher than a geo tube, does that crack? And, but we went out to see if we could get some funding for that on the basis of the utilization of new technology that we might be able to get the government to pay a, a, a fairer cost.
And that is, that is very true, Councilor Foster. And I was the one who applied for the funding and, you know, oversaw that for its technology. But as I said, we, I think we did that in twenty fifteen. And when, when we didn't have a lot of funding program for the greenhouse gas emission. So we applied under the energy savings results. And as, as we know, that, that technology saves the greenhouse gas more than energy. So just because of that, we scored a little bit lesser point. Had we applied in twenty sixteen, then the results could have been different. But that's on the hindsight, right? Because we didn't knew that the previous government had come up with these aggressive programs to, to address the climate change goals. So that's correct. And in this, as, as Chris said, that already is defined as mechanical de-watering with, with some utility operational cost and, and yes, the capital cost is higher on end too. But there will be some advantages, but looking at operating and you can expect that more, you can have operating costs and other costs.
Yeah, certainly, and so that option, if you call option three, you know, you had geo tube de-watering there. You could just like take that option and put in the original system in that option. The reason, the reason we didn't put the origin there, the mechanical operations, was, was for the reason that Indra said, because we have reviewed those in the past. And we looked at mechanical de-water as opposed to the passive system, the geo tube is very passive. You can do it continuously and you only have to, to get rid of it once a year. Whereas the mechanic system needs storage, there's a lot of operations and maintenance associated with it. You need redundancy if whatever breaks down during that operations maintenance service, there's reasons why we took it out of the evaluation. But that would be the option three would be just interchangeable with mechanical geo tube, but geo tube went one of that, that evaluation.
Okay.
And, and to answer the, the increase in the capital cost, I, I mean, you know, it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a very lame statement, I would say, but you know, next year, the one point four might be one point six. But as we know, the cost keeps increasing of these offerings, especially not the cost of the technology itself, but the cost of engineering, the cost of, you know, other civil and electrical and mechanical works that's certain. Because geo tube, I don't think geo tube, the cost itself has changed a lot, but you know, it's all about the construction that's required to have that technology installed. And as we know, the labor rates and all other materials and they have increased in last couple of years, so that's the result, the cost has gone. But I'm, I'm pretty much sure next year it might be a very twelve, a fifty grand one.
Why, should I ask? Why would that be increasing well below the rate of inflation, let's say? Because the last time we looked, yeah, well, I guess now it's not quite so bad, you've gone from low. But it's still well above the rate of inflation there, those cost increases.
And, and this is estimated cost, right?
Yeah.
So we are not saying that we're gonna hit one point four for this year. It can be lower than that, is that correct, Chris?
Well, yeah. Yeah, we, we did actually, we did price that, I was involved with the original project. We did price that out, going to a formal tender gross estimate, so that was a secret pricing. But we went back and actually talked to the contractors that bid on that process. And talked to them about what the cost would be. And so the estimates that we've gotten were actually from contractors, if they were constructed this year. So I think, I think our pricing is pretty good, you know, I didn't want to repeat the problem of that, as if you recall. Right, come and so, but contractors that they're pricing this time around. Speak to Indra's point. Yes, the, if construction goes up and you'll see it go up and it doesn't follow, it doesn't follow CBI, it doesn't follow inflation. They have their own geared index and it's much higher for some reason.
Yeah, I just concerned because we've seen this go, okay? And, and we don't wanna, if we start to go down the path, we don't wanna turn around, find out, well, the project guest comes in at two or two and a half million dollars, so.
And I, and I totally understand, you know, that in both cases, in all these cases, I mean, in geo tube, that that has happened in the past. And, and I agree with Chris, I think, you know, that's why in this, this study, we took a little bit of more homework, getting those formal pricing rather than estimating based on historical prices, so that the price kind of stays within, within certain percentage. So just to expand out of the context, in the last year, what we saw is that a Canadian Water was what we're funding. Basically gave every single municipality, province, money to build projects. And we did the estimates in most of the project based on historical pricing, with adjustment of the CPIs. But then everybody started getting money and there's projects all over the province. And when we started going to the market and asked the contractors to bid, then we saw that the prices went up like almost forty percent than we estimated. And the simple reason was everybody has so much work, but then we just went up, like, you know, in, in, in remote communities, even in Windsor, Essex area, there was electrical, one electrical contractor company, which is beating like fifteen jobs, where in, in the past year, they haven't been five one. So that kind of bumped up, so to Chris's point, sometimes it just, it is correlated with the inflation for sure. But sometimes there's other reasons that kind of bump those prices too.
What kind of lead times do you need in terms of getting your, the funding applications ready? Because we're already looking, it's February nineteen, March first, not very far away.
No, so from my side, it's about one week to, you know, work with our area and get the documents in permission building. And I think it's up to the town, there's some documents which the town needs to, Cynthia needs to sign and with the council approval. Some of those things are in there. And I don't know if one week will be sufficient for the town to, you know, sign those documents. So there's really basically the application form that needs to be signed. And there's a one letter which, which basically talks about having consulted with the province about this project. And our, our standard, because we, in the Ministry of Environment, to some extent, under this feasibility study. So that itself can be presented as a consultation with the, with the province. So those couple of documents needs to be signed by the town. And one thing I think we forgot to tell is that we just figured, we just found out after the study was done is that the town actually have the geo tube approved under the ECA. So that means you guys already have a permit to do that work. That saves almost eight months, was to go through this process and have, you guys didn't have this in the ECA. We, we, we are supposed to do ECA and the process, which is gonna take eight, ten months just to get approval. But this, this is twenty fourteen document, September twenty fourteen, so this is valid for five years. So I think this kind of increases our funding chances as well as, you know, keep having, Chris is that that, you know, you, you already have it in your paper, you can just go ahead and do it if, if the town wants to and if the funding is available.
Okay, so we would need to pass a resolution for you to go forward to do the funding.
I, I, I don't know how the town business works here, but, you know, I just need an email from Cynthia telling me to, you know, go ahead with the progression of the project.
Councilor Foster.
If we apply for the funding and they gave us five percent or something like that, we don't have to proceed with the project, we just, but it'll give us a fixed amount, it'll at least tell us what it's gonna cost us.
We can always tell that, you know, we couldn't secure that as enough amount.
Okay, do we have any concerns with going ahead with the funding application?
As long as we're not tied into anything.
We're not tied into anything.
I already don't have any problems with that.
Okay, so we're gonna have a possible resolution tonight, so we can get this finished. Okay, so I have, I'll move over in a second there. It reads, Council of the RAC Office is proceeding with funding application for option three biosolids project. Okay, moved by Councilor Foster, seconded by Councilor Loack. Is there any other discussion on this option? Okay, so I'll call the vote, hold the paper. Motion is carried. So I think that concludes this for today, it was only the presentation, so thank you for coming and presenting that to us and hopefully go a little forward. I have one other motion to adjourn the meeting. By Councilor Loack, seconded by Councilor Foster. Being resolved, that special meeting of councils here by adjourned at quarter seven C M, all the papers.